It is about 6:35 and we'll start by noticing that the open meeting law is there and we'll say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since last March, when we had the distinction of being the first town outside of Lincoln and Omaha to have a suspect COVID case when girls were at state basketball and all that that happened, and the closing of the school and the the rough time but the not-so-rough time since then, it appears that the second wave is catching us. So I just want to say that we're aware as there are, I know that there are people already hurting either from limited time at work or no work that have been affected. I know there are people hurting because of family members that are affected either with death or with severe cases. There's a real underlying fear, no matter what we think, we have under control, we're all affected. Mr. Pike is absent tonight. He didn't quite test it this morning, they have no results back. We just have several families around town. Isla slipped right through with having had it and didn't tell us and she's back. So go with care, go with God, go with my best wishes. The first thing on tonight's agenda is, let's see if I can find tonight's agenda. Here we go. We're going to try to whizz right through this, so if you have questions, step up quick. The minutes of the November 2nd, 2020 meeting, it's in your packet. I think you've all had time to read them. They've been published. Any changes that you might want or any questions you might have, now's the time, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those. Okay, then I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the November meeting.
Okay, motion by Arlene to approve the November 2nd meeting minutes. Second?
I'll second the motion.
Arlene, this is the motion and I, second, or it does, yes, second. Dawn?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
And Isla?
Yes.
Okay, we have, secondly, the claims and the financial statements, they are here, if any, I guess, and you also have that in your packet that has them listed. So if there's anything that you have questions about, they're always here for you to look at. Anybody, remember that you've got two lists. The one list is pre-approved items. These are the things that we pay when the bill gets here because we can't put them off basically, and they've been pre-approved. We list what the estimate is, but then we, at some point, we decided that that's just confusing to have one number and then another number. Doesn't matter what the estimate is, what matters is what we paid. So in your packet, you will have a list of claims that you need to approve as, for tonight to be paid after tonight. The other one is the amounts actually paid last month on those pre-approved ones. Those are things like payroll withholdings, insurance premiums, sale packs, the things that are just regular business and reoccurring, the utility bills, et cetera. And they run about the same all the time. So if you've had a chance to look through those, we can think about approving those.
So stepping's bill, that's the repair, the truck?
Is that the big one? I don't have it in front of me, right? Just under 10 grand or right at 10 grand? Right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, thanks, just had to check it out. Yes, that is for the repair of the truck. And that's about what Jerry told us it was going to run, so we used that. In fact, I see it's a thousand. I remember when it was out for that day, I said, so for 10 grand, and he said, oh, yeah. And he's under that by almost a thousand, so that's a good deal. Any others? Okay, then I would add a motion for approval of bills for.
I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
Okay, motion by Dawn to pay the claims, seconded by Arlene. So let's start with, um, Arlene?
Yes.
And then Isla?
Yes.
And Dawn?
Yes.
Okay. We have the annual certification program compliance resolution authorized signing. There's two forms here, and I want to walk through those with you a little bit. Every year, we have, we have a street superintendent and we have a city engineer. It happens that our street superintendent is, works for JBO, so sometimes it's easy to see JBO and think that that's all about the engineer. The street superintendent has to be named by name rather than by company. So in the, in your packet, you have a resolution that was sent out by the Nebraska Department of Transportation, Department of Roads, and this is the signing of the year-end certification of the city street superintendent. This resolution, I want us to understand what we're doing. The whereas is state of Nebraska, and then it gives you statutes, 39, three different ones in that category, 2302, 2511, 2512. Details, the requirements must be met in order for municipality to qualify for the annual incentive payment program. That incentive payment is right at $1,000, okay? And that's what we pay to our street superintendent for the work he does for us. The state of, whereas the state of Nebraska Department of Transportation requires that each incorporated municipality must annually certify that the appointment of the city street superintendent is using the year-end certification of city street superintendent, and whereas the DOT requires that such certification shall also include a copy of the documentation of the city street superintendent's appointment, that is, meeting minutes, et cetera, showing the appointment of the city street superintendent by their name as it appears on their license, their license number and the class of license, and type of appointment, that is, employed, contract, consultant, or interlocal agreement, with another incorporated municipality and county, and the beginning date of the appointment, and whereas the DOT also requires that such year-end certification of city street superintendent shall be signed by the mayor or the village board chairman, and shall include a copy of resolution of the governing body authorizing the signing of the year-end certification of city street superintendent by the mayor. Be it resolved that the mayor or village board chairman of Crofton would be, is hereby authorized to sign the attached year-end certification of city street superintendent, and then the date and all this. Your names will be listed here, that would be Arlene, Isla, and Dawn, and Larry Pike. I assume even though he's absent, he's listed because he is a member of the council at the time that this is, has been in force. So now, we need a, we need a motion by a council member to adopt this resolution, and a second, and then a roll call vote, and then this is sent to the Nebraska Department of Transportation, and they then will issue us that $1,000 payment. So this is a three-page deal. You have this, which is your resolution that gives your mayor the authority to sign it. The next page gives the year-end certification, and that is what I have to sign. And we mark off all this and fill in all of those, and we have Steve's information in there with his, his license number and those kinds of things. We just got his new, sort of, his new application for street engineer. And then on page three, which is the back of that last one, that's, we will attach the minutes and the, actually, we did not do this last year, and apparently we couldn't find anything, but we did it two years ago, and that's okay. My understanding is that we haven't replaced him with anybody. So, so we have the minutes where he was named street superintendent, and then we have the original document, like we will see later tonight where we reassign. So I would say we would need, this is 12, 7, 2020 will be the resolution number, and we'll put in parentheses, a quotation one there, a parentheses one, because there's several resolutions tonight. So this will be number one, and we always number, for those of you who are new, I'm kind of going through this too, you've probably done this too, but the resolution is whatever the date is. So this is 12, 7, 2020, so that's, that's an easy way to find our resolutions, and our ordinances in our book, if we know when it was passed. So the resolution number will be 7, 12, 7, 2020, quote, or parentheses one. And then we need a motion for the adoption of this resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution, 12, 7, 2021, 2020, parentheses one.
Okay.
To identify, do we Steve Parr as our street superintendent?
No, this is not to name him, but to certify that, that we had him. If we did not have a certified street superintendent, they won't give us that thousand.
Yeah, okay.
So this is a certification that he did the work. Thank you, Arlene. So that goes in, moved by Arlene, and second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dawn, and then the roll call vote is, Isla?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And Arlene?
Yes.
Okay. So then let's move to that next page, two of the three, and this certifies that, that is that superintendent, and there's his license number and so forth, as I said. You don't have to do anything, you, what you just did was vote to certify that I can certify. That gives me permission to sign it, okay? So I will, we have the original one with all the red tape and the red writing and so forth. And so we'll fill that in, and that will go out, and then attach to documents we need in the next page. Okay? Any questions? Okay, so moving on to the next set, there's a resolution, the signing of the municipal annual certification program compliance form. Now, these names are also easy to mix up, and they all have those little red lines and small press, and it's easy to confuse them. So now we're going to have a resolution, 12, dash, or 7, 2020, and this is going to be parentheses number two. And this also has to do with that streets program. Now, as you are aware, we have certain monies that have to be spent on the streets. So let's read the resolution. Whereas state of Nebraska statutes, section 39, 2115, 21, 19, 2120, 21 and 20, parentheses two, requires an annual certification of program compliance to the Nebraska Board of Public Roads Classification and Standards. So whereas the state of Nebraska, section 2120, also requires that the annual certification of program compliance of each municipality shall be signed by the mayor or the village board chairman, or chairperson, and shall include a copy of a resolution, the governing body of the municipality authorizing the signing of this form. So be it resolved that the mayor of Crofton is hereby authorized to sign the attached municipal annual certification program compliance form, and that would be adopted this, and that would be seventh day of December 2020. And that's at Crofton, and then again, the board members. So then again, we need a motion to certify or to authorize, is the word I'm looking for, authorize the mayor to sign this certification. So I need another motion. And by the way, I'll go through that certification with you if you want. That's all stapled together, I think, in your notes. You want to run through that before you do the motion? What this said, we used to, two years ago, we didn't have to do this, Steve Parr did all this, this was done at the other office, and then the state changed it. So Steve's been working with me to come help me understand what this is all about. So if you will go with whatever is stapled together there, you'll find our profit lost by fund, there's this group of figures, and this is the restricted street fund. Notice, it says ordinary income and expenses, it's ordinary because it comes in through the county, it's still restricted, okay? So category 4000 is governmental income that comes from Knox County. There is a group, there is a, a category of taxes that come in that comes from motor vehicles. Whenever the county collects taxes for us, they then charge us a fee. So you will see those fees, that commission, in a, in a negative form. So the motor vehicle took in 36502, and then the pro, the pro rate was 17,493, and then we had that $34 out for commissions. Oh, and, and the, the motor vehicle township, there's, this confused me for, oh, quite a while, actually, because when the township money comes in, it says personal property tax, and you think, well, that's not motor vehicle. But because the only money we get that is township money is because we have roads that we vex, it all goes to the roads. So, and we've checked this out several times. So from the county, from Knox County distribution, this was for October 19 through September 20, so this was last fiscal year. 32,000. The local restrictive receipts is the motor, city motor vehicle sales tax. This is our 1% that we get from the sales. We don't get to put that towards the economic development and the swimming pool and so forth. This has to go to the motor vehicles. So that goes in the street fund, that's 16,000. Intergovernmental means that it comes from some other entity besides the local taxing entity. So from the state receipts, we have highway allocations, which is just the state giving us X amount of dollars, and that's based on the lane mile report and the population, and that's what our road superintendent does. He counts the lanes of roads and has the population and works the formula, and that's one of the street superintendent's jobs. So he sends in those reports, and then the state gives us that allocation. 97,000, the local, almost 98,000, we got last year. The highway, and by the way, that one we can lose if we don't do things right. That's why we file all this paperwork. The highway incentive is that 1,000. The incentive says get a net and get a street superintendent so that you know what you're doing, get your one six-year plan and so forth, and that's part of that whole. And then there's a motor vehicle fee that comes from the state also. So that 102,000 is from the state, you add that all together, and looky there, we've got 152,000 dollars that is designated for the streets. If I remember, and I didn't go back and check, but if I remember, last year it was 112, but I'm not sure that all the money that was supposed to be in those funds was in there because we've done some rearranging of what went into what fund, just simply because of learning curves. So the 152 has to be spent in the fiscal year. If it is not spent, they reduce the amount of the highway allocations. So you don't need it. So this is what you are saying that I am certifying with that vote for certification. This expense is here for you to see, that utilities, I don't know what that's, where did that come from? I think it's one of the, the lights out on the signs or something. Payroll could be bigger. We put all the payroll into the general funds and then dispersed it out, and we have only done one, about one or two dispersals there, so that can be bigger. But we have, we, we know that streets is not our biggest thing, sewer and water is one of our biggest things for our payroll, so. All of that section, payroll taxes and benefits, that's all in one lump sum. Then there's your contract professional service, there's the 1,000. The 1,000 came in up above and went back out, we paid that 1,000 to Steve Parr. The contract professional service, or the vehicle operations, can be trucks, tractors, you know, whatever, and the repair, the equipment expense, repair mountains, maintenance of grounds and buildings, and I think I opened that as a new one because we've got all these things, like running back and forth and fixing something out at the shop and, and just repair stuff that, that needs to be expensed to the streets because that's what we're doing, picking up cones, taking them here, there, et cetera. And then we have the shop supplies. The electricity and gas expense is pretty good size, we pay a pretty good price to heat that shop out there. It's kind of a, not very big, but there's no insulation in the doors and so forth, that it needs some work. The telecommunications and the internet is simply a portion of the phone bills and so forth. The service charges posted, publishing and so forth. The big one here is the capital outlay on the vehicle, we've spent 65,000, that was the 45, and the, that was the 40,000 for the, what's the word I want, guys?
Miller.
Miller, and 25,000, 35,000 for the truck, so that's in there. The road building material, this is, that's 33,000. I found a couple others that have kind of sneaked their way into a different account that I think probably needs to move back over here, but that's to build the strip. So when, traditionally, that strip has lasted three years, it's not going to this year because we've used more of it. But, you know, one of the big things we've heard around town is we want better streets. Now, Steve Parr tells us that at all the towns that he is street superintendent, that we've got some of the best streets. He said, you have to realize that a lot of streets are dirt, gravel, rock. He said, you've got all paved streets. Now, yes, they need, the thing about a paved streets, when there's a hole, you know there's a hole. And so we'll be working on a lot of that, and have been. So looky, 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 we spent 152,000. We need to spend 152,000. We spent just a little over. We went 82, $82 in the hole. Last year, we needed to spend 12 more. When we, and we can always make, these, these transfers can be done because we've got all of Sharon Street, the city's put no money into any of those streets out there, that's all been paid by assessments. So we can always spend more if we need to, but we definitely want to spend more. The fund balance transfer is those things that come through before, and I, that's, that's the money that was sent there. So we'll talk about that when we get to a profit loss. But look at just what we spent this year, because that's the certification that we have to give. So now going back to, you have, what you have in front of you is that resolution that says that I am, that I can sign this certification, that we did what we were supposed to do. So I need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve this annual certification program of compliance.
Okay, Dawn moved to certify the program compliance form, and second?
Second.
Seconded by Arlene. So it's dark, Dawn?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
And Isla?
Yes.
Okay, so then we have, that certification is there, and its proof is there. What's next on our agenda? Go back to that. A while back, we had a resolution to open that pool account over here with the Crofton We never did vote on it. Or did we? I, is that, we did vote? Yes. Yes, we voted on, yes, sorry about that. We voted on opening the pool account, that's, that's okay, I've got the, I write in front of me, it says resolution is that. When we opened that account, we would like to take care of the business that's been kind of sitting for a while. We need to authorize signatories on all bank accounts belonging to the city of Crofton. And I think Mr. Manelli brought a resolution to that effect tonight. Maybe that's.
On the table.
Oh, okay, thank you. Got it. Yep. Okay, be it resolved by the mayor and council, the city of Crofton, that the duly-appointed county Crofton city clerk and city treasurer be and hereby are authorized and directed to execute all bank documents and signature cards necessary to enable them to make payments and claims for distribution funds duly authorized by the city council. Be it further resolved that such authorization shall commence today and continue, this day and continue until such time is revoked by the action of the mayor and the council. This is the day. This is the 7th of December and this would be 12, no, 12/7/2020 (3). Do we need names on this or just the city clerk and treasurer? Just the city clerk and treasurer, okay. We need this in place because, and just so you know, I intend to ask you to vote for Arlene as clerk and Ila as treasurer and split.
No, Ila.
Excuse me, Lisa, as treasurer. I always get names mixed up. And I'm concerned about getting this done because with the rampant work of COVID, we need two signatures on every check. We need to be able to do business, so we need to separate that so we've got more than one or two people on that signature card. Okay? We don't know how long this is going to last. So I would entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, 12/7/2020 (3). For the pool account, for the clerk and treasurer to be on the signature card.
Okay.
And maybe.
That's already there. I think I have two. And I, but, yeah. Motion by Arlene to approve clerk and treasurer to be on all authority, or on all documents with both banks, all bank accounts. So that motion by Arlene, second?
All seconded.
Seconded by Ila. And vote, I don't remember the order. I, I think Arlene?
Yes.
Ila?
Yes.
And Don.
Yes.
Okay. So that's that one. Then the next on your agenda is this glad hill spreader power unit. And that was, I think we laid that on your desk separate. Last year, there was some talk about getting more sand and gravel and so forth applied to intersections, especially in the wintertime when the ice is bad. We also know that when we are building roads, we have to get sand and that gravel or whatever, concrete, et cetera, et cetera, out into the building of the new pavement. The guy's done some research and I don't know if there's a price on here. Pat?
The research, I believe, 4450 from this year. I've been doing this before. A year ago, I talked to the factory and initially started to search for something cheaper than a self-propelled chip spreader. I talked to the factory and they bid it at 5,500 dollars.
So we're about 1,100 cheaper than the factory down here. Same machine?
Same machine, same factory.
Right.
It's the same, we've got a better deal through the distributor.
And the power unit is what you thought you might have to add, if I got that right?
Well, the older trucks, the hydraulic system can't handle the waste and the spread at the same time. So as a cheaper alternative to updating the truck if it needed to be, an update on hydraulic system on a truck generally runs from 3,500 to 10,000 dollars labor material. The new truck that we purchased has a capacity to run both. We would just have to add a $300 valve implement to put it on the new truck. The reason we're looking into the possibility of a separate one is if we replace our chip spreader, we currently have us having a number of issues plus its age. We would be best to have two, but we're looking for one now to solve streets and intersections. So the new truck, it can get mounted on simply. If you get the second one, instead of spending 10,000 dollars on power units, the hydraulics just for that truck, we would have been the alternative of a hydraulically powered unit with a gasoline engine. So that way, let's, let's say the international, the other international truck that we got goes down, we can put that power unit in the glad hill off of that and build a complete replacement truck without having to spend an additional 3,500 to 10,000 dollars because the hydraulic system on the truck is usually specific to that truck.
Right.
So those are some options, but right now we're asking the council for, we would like to put the one we're asking for tonight on the new truck.
Right. And, and that would be usable then this winter as a, as a spreader of sand in the intersections, et cetera. And the nice thing about that is the truck's big enough to have a big enough load that you don't have to keep running back for more sand and you don't have, you know, it'll do the job. The other thing that we, and then it would also be usable in the road building next summer.
I think that this is an item that should be for new business.
Okay.
We've never, you know, this is the first anybody's seen this or, I don't know if the other two constables have seen it, but I haven't seen this before.
Well, we talked about, remember last year when they talked about spreading the sand? And that, that's why we brought it in here, Don, was because last year we were talking about the only thing we have is a borrowed unit. And when it throws the sand out, it throws it through the intersection and hits cars and so forth. Larry was talking last year about getting the gravel out to the intersections and, and the one that we had that sat in the back of the truck. And we don't own that besides, is it right in that, the counties? Yeah. Plus the fact that it throws sand too far and so forth. So we were, we've been looking for this for a year. So I guess I just assumed that, that, and that's fine.
What do we use right now? Is the county chart, is it used, that machine? Can you guys spend $4,000 on a sand spreader?
I don't think you get to contribute here, James, yet.
No, I'm just saying as a member of the city.
As a member of the city, if that is a member of the city? Yeah. What was your question?
We're spending $4,000 on the sand spreader? That we give borrow one for free?
Well.
Because that's what the purpose of it is. That's borrowed one.
A borrowed one that doesn't work well, that, Larry, you wanted to tell him the problems?
Yeah, it's got a spreader on NBA C gear.
Yeah.
And it's thrown so far, we're going to be able to live it all the time.
And so they won't use it because they're not going to go through hitting and debt and being, besides that, we don't know what, what the county wants to do with it, if they just dump it on us or what. But we, that's not appropriate for what we want for building roads next year. So we were trying to do two things with one, with one throw here. When it comes to building the roads, now I, I need to say something here. I trust my maintenance guys and I'm not a dummy. So when they come to me and say, we can make this more efficient and we walk through all of these deals and we know what, and, and they're using baleen wire to hold things together out there. And then everybody in town wants better roads, but then they don't want to spend any money on any equipment to get better roads. That's a little, that's a little confusing. So I still think it's old business. Mr. McNally, is there any way we can settle this? You?
Well, we talked about it before, so under those circumstances, it would be.
Yeah, we talked about it last winter. If, if, I've got two others here that are on the board that they want to make a motion or, yes, Pat, you'll say, go ahead.
To further to answer your question, that piece of equipment would not just spread sand. If it would spread sand, it would spread the chip coat over the top of the oil on our undercoating by streets. The machine that we have now is, by my guess, and I don't feel fault me because, I mean, it's old, it's over 67 years old from what I can tell you, you can't get filters for it, there's paint freeze in the oil. A good used one is over 100,000 dollars. And so looking at all the criteria that we'd like to meet, this is probably the cheapest thing that we could find. And it does all those jobs. Plus, with the new miller that we bought, we need to lay down a coat of concrete powder. Like you would add the concrete over the asphalt and you know that, and this machine would allow us to do that as well.
Well, and that was part of the plan from the beginning when we bought the miller. This was part of the whole upgrade.
So we're not getting just the chip spreader. We're, we're getting a machine that for a few thousand dollars, plus if down the road at the chip spreader we're with, we would purchase one more and put it on another truck. We would have a better capacity to continually fix our road chip process when we're fixing the streets on just that one process.
So we actually have three deals here. We have the chip spreader over the new pavement. We have laying the new pavement and we have laying the, the sand at the intersections, all of which can come out of this machine.
That's correct.
And it's 4,400 dollars.
I still think it's new business. Because we never talked about buying anything whenever that was. And we talked about the sand thing, the same, because I suggested buying a three-quarter ton to put a, a sander on.
Which is, isn't that what, isn't that what we're talking about?
Not, not for $4,000 is a lot different.
Okay. Well, you don't get anything for nothing anymore, so.
It is new, it's new stuff.
Well, yes.
I want to give the sander that goes in the back of the truck to pick up and I, I don't remember any numbers. All I remember when I, when I was doing the initial research was it was dramatically more than this glad hill because most of them are stainless steel, because of the salt that you usually, most people would add with it and the motors and things. So I really didn't research it any further because of the extra expense.
So I don't want to get in an argument here, Don. You don't think it's new, or your old business and Mr. McNally says it is if we talked about it. We all agree that we talked about it last winter. But if, if we don't want to do that, we can do it in another meeting. What that means is we can table it till next time unless one of you girls wants to make a motion. Okay. So item number six, approval of Arlene as a part-time clerk, co-signer of checks, et cetera. That's kind of been upgraded. I'm asking you to approve. Do we do the appointments now or next meeting?
Well, the new appointment for the, with the new.
Okay. Okay. So this one we just table as well. I thought that was, we just put them in the wrong ones. So number seven is discussion and possible approval of the new engineering contract for the sewer. And I'm going to tell you right now, that's table till January as far as any approval. You have in your packets a letter that I wrote to you concerning our meeting and for the public. I gave, Brooke, did you get a copy of that email that I?
Yes.
Okay. That's basically about all we can say at this point. You know as much as we know, as far as, basically, we had a short meeting and we asked JPO and Miller Associates out of Carney to give us a proposal by the 30th of December and then we'll go from there. We are told that we should be able to meet our deadline and I forwarded a letter today to the D E E people who were asking about that and assured them we're going to do what as far as we can. This is just an unfortunate thing. Kirk and Michael, just in a nutshell, they had engineers that quit, one of them had been sick or whatever. They don't have the personnel to do it. So rather than get us into hot water, they wanted to hand it off. They have already sent a binder full of stuff to everybody involved so that they can use what they have to move forward. And that's about all we know. The, I guess that's about it unless anybody has anything else.
Cheryl, did Kirk and Michael send a letter that said they're, they're not going to do this or how did this all happen?
I am not going to go into any detail, but yes, we were contacted by them that they were unable to finish the project. So.
Please proceed to adjourn this meeting.
Do we swear them in during now or the next?
Open the meeting for the people. Everybody swear them in and then make your appointment.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Adjourned by Don, immediate motion by Don and seconded by Ila to adjourn this meeting. So Ila?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Arlene. Okay. With that, we will, I think you have a second agenda and your packet. So we will call this meeting to order at 7:25. And do we repeat the pledge or not? Yes, let's say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, Can I take a minute? I don't know if any of you ever get on Facebook. I know we all do. Did anybody so fortunate, or how many of you were fortunate enough to see, I don't know if it was on Facebook or one of the websites or whatever, because I kind of get on the corner and around and the, follow the wrestling and the basketball on the YouTube and those that are putting them out there for us to watch now. The pledge reminded me, they had a mess up at a game and there was nobody, the band or whoever was, the singer wasn't around and this dad of one of the players steps up with no mic, with no nothing and just belts out them. up with no mic, with no nothing, and just belts out them. And it was just awesome. So, just wanted you to know, there's those out there that still have a lot of patriotism and don't mind showing it. Okay, so, first thing on the agenda, that we're introducing the subdivision regulations, and it is approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is an introduction to it only. We got in trouble so many times with saying, oh, here's the plan, and this is approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. There will be a public hearing at a later date, um, and the, will be open for, um, conversation and/or, and then the city will, um, vote to accept or not accept this. It's quite lengthy. Um, I encouraged all the members that were here before to pick up a copy, the two new members, I think it's in your packet. There's a lot of pages there, and we will not address this till January, so, uh, if you want a copy of the old one, I don't know, I think we just put the new one in there. So.
Can we be sworn in so we can participate?
Yes, yes, thank you, Bob. As a matter of swearing in, we just have an oath of office that we have you read, and I'll have you fill that in and sign it, and then we'll have you stand up and read your oath of office. Done, we're just talking about it, and then go to the other end again. See, I had that swearing in on the other, on the other meeting, so I didn't even have it on my notes here. So, Bob, would you go first, please?
I, Robert W., as useful, I solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska against all enemies, foreign, and immense, that can hold their true faith by allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely without method reservation or the purpose of invasion, and that I will faithfully and partially perform the duties of City Council according to the law and to the best of my ability. I further swear that I do not advocate nor am I a member of any political organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence, and that during such a time, I am in a position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of government of the United States or of this state by force or violence, so help me God.
Thank you, Bob.
I, Murphy Hughes Holliday swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska against all enemies, foreign, and immense, that I will bear truth and faith alliance of the same, that I take this obligation freely without method reservation or the purpose of invasion, and that I will faithfully and partially perform the duties of the Office of the City Council according to the law and to the best of my ability, and I further swear that I do not advocate nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates overthrow of government of the United States or of this state by force or violence, and that during such time, as I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates overthrow of government of the United States or of this state by force or violence, so help me God.
Thank you. Okay, so welcome, Bob and James. James, do you prefer James?
Anyone.
Okay. That'll probably come to you.
Yep, that's.
And you don't have to leave, Don, but you're welcome. We just kind of.
No, I didn't. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you for your dominant service. Okay, so we've, we've covered number one now, and number two is the appointment of officer. So I would like to appoint, um, Arlene as clerk, Lisa as treasurer, JEO as the engineer, Mr. McNally as the attorney, and of course Jonathan as our police chief, and Steve Parr as the street superintendent. So, I don't know, you gentlemen, I don't know if you know any of these people. Of course, you know, Lisa and Arlene. JEO's been with us for a couple of years. Like I said, they've done really well with, um, that thousand dollars is all we've paid for the street superintendent, although that's not JEO's services completely. They've been out here several times, oh gosh, two years ago, Mr. Henkey was out and talked about the pool, and, and they came out and looked at Omaha Street, and they came out and looked at Second Street over here, and they, we've been down on a couple of corners down there that's on the one and six and so forth, and, and although Mr. Steve Parr is our street superintendent, his job is more about, uh, the one and six plan and some of that. Any of those other things are extras, and he didn't charge us for them. So, uh, we've had some pretty good service there, as far as I'm concerned. If the board has other people that they want to look at in the future, that's fine. This is my nominations for now. Mr. McNally's done us a world of good. You'd have to fight me to get rid of him, but, um, and of course, we have no choice. I have to keep Jonathan, but he's not here to hear me say that. So, um, I guess I would look for, can we just blanket all of them?
Yes, I need a motion to approve.
All of them, we don't have to do them individually. So I would like a motion to approve these nominations.
If we're having a discussion about any or all of these individuals, is that something because of a personnel matter that we go in closed session, discuss them individually, or is that not, I mean, because of a personnel thing, would that be the case, or how would?
Say that again.
If it's a matter of personnel, because these are obviously employees of the city, when we're dealing with those personnel issues that may, or however you want to look at it, be negative towards those people and their performance, do we need to do that closed session, or do we just?
We can, we can if we need to, yes. If, and your question is, like, in the future, or like in the past, or?
I mean, before we approve these.
Before you approve them?
Yeah.
Um, if you would care to, is there a need for that, or is that appropriate, Mr. McNally?
Well, the problem is, if you don't approve them, then until you do approve them, you're not going to have a clerk, you're not going to have treasurer, you're not going to have a police chief, you're not going to have city attorney.
In other words, these are, these, this is person, yes, they're personnel, but they are, they are personnel we have to have. Does that make sense?
Right.
This is something we can't go without.
If we're going to vote on these?
And we're just, we're just asking to extend what we already have, basically.
If we want to vote on these, I don't think we blanket them. We're going to buy each individual.
You can do that.
Okay, make a motion if anybody wants to, so.
I'll make a motion to do them individually.
Well, just make a motion to go, well, we'll do them individually, that's not a problem. So if you have someone you want individually, go.
Well, we can go right now, we just started with, with Arlene as city clerk. I mean, we can, we did.
Okay, I'm waiting for, and pick the other.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
It's relatively new or different to have those positions split. Can you give me a little context as to why you're having the clerk and treasurer positions split?
Basically because we want them both bonded and both able to sign checks at this point in case somebody gets sick.
So are they, just for clarification for me, are they both clerk treasurer? When you talked earlier, you said Lisa was going to be treasurer and Arlene was going to be clerk.
I don't, Mr. McNally?
They're separate candidates.
Yes.
And combined as clerk treasurer, but the mayor has decided that he would have an individual clerk and an individual treasurer.
It defines their job a little better, for one thing, um, and, um, it makes, it, it clarifies, here's the deal. The, the, what I've read, they don't recommend that you make two of them a clerk treasurer. Okay? So if you divide, and if you don't have that title, you don't bond them. And we want them where they are bonded so they can handle the money to go to the bank and so forth. The clerk can do that, and the treasurer can do that. But a lot of the recommendations have been that you don't combine those two out of the, you know, out of the, uh, leg of municipalities, but we've not had the choice because we didn't have the personnel. We have choice now.
Are they both full-time?
They will probably wind up with a little under full-time. If that's the question that we're asking, is that what we want to know about, is the timing? Because, you know, um, bless her heart, Diane Allen came in one day and said, good Lord, I've worked here long enough to know that there's enough work in there for seven people. So if we get one more, thank heaven.
So, so you're going to have one named clerk and one named treasurer, but they can both do the same, just the sign, just the signing on the bank accounts?
Their jobs overrun a little bit.
I guess that's what I'm asking, because the treasurer technically shouldn't, shouldn't write the minutes necessarily.
Your clerk primarily does your minutes and your meetings, and takes your money, et cetera. Your treasurer prepares your reports, you know, those kinds of things.
Sure.
We, we don't know, Brooke, but we're all new to this game, you know, in a lot of ways. We would love to get more training on all of this, too. We're not perfect.
Well, that wasn't my implication, I'm just trying to be clear about, since it's, it's, it went from.
We've been, we've been reading all of the city.
Part, last month it was.
About what the jobs are and trying to work with that.
Right, right. And when Arlene was hired last month, it was part-time to do a little filing and help out a little bit.
It was part-time because she was still on the board and she couldn't do those jobs. She was just in there to help straighten up files.
Okay. So they'll both have signing authority on checks?
Yes, that's what I would like.
They'll both have the ability to deal with the bank?
Yes.
They'll both have, I mean, one is going to, but, but like Arlene will write the minutes.
So that if one of them is not going to work that day, the other one can carry on business.
Well, sure.
You know, then they can trade days, they could, you know.
The wardens provide separate duties for the clerk and separate duties for the treasurer.
Yes.
And that's set forth in state statute. And so if you ask what the duties are, you need to go back to the warden to see what the warden said that the clerk does and what the treasurer does.
But then in addition, some will be combined.
Well.
Is what I just heard.
The council can also delegate foundational duties, of course, but.
Okay.
The statute is pretty.
Trying to be clear. I'm just trying to be clear, so I don't report it wrong, so that's fine. You can do whatever you want to do, that's not my business, but I'm just trying to be clear about what I say occurred, so.
So the, the only, the only date we have, like the cutoff date where we have to do this now is Mr. McNally, because, or are the street superintendent, is their job sufficient to end January one if they're not renewed, or how does that work?
Yes, state statute says that in the first meeting after the election that these appointments are made.
Yeah. First meeting in December.
So just as you come into office on this date, so does the appointments for the other people who work for the city. Now, for years and years, there was no appointments probably made because they just repeated, you know, but we kind of became aware of this, and like I said last year, but I don't know if we did all the designation. I think the state statute actually says every year, and, and I think our city statute says every year there's an election, but remember state, I'm assuming state statute always takes precedence if there's a question.
That's correct.
But in, according to what I've read, that you, you consult, you can do Jonathan's by yourself, that's something that you can do independent of us, right? You have the right.
Only the police chief, I can hire and fire, yeah. And I think that's basically, you'd want to be in an emergency kind of thing. I mean, why would I want to? I don't want to do anything by myself.
So if, if we, if we don't appoint a city, a street superintendent tonight, what do we do? Is it possible that you don't do that tonight? Or do we have to do that tonight?
If you're, if you don't want to approve this, I guess I would want to know if you have somebody else in mind, or if you just don't want, you know, that would be my thing. If the, if the board has come in, if the new councils come in here with a group of people that they would like to see in these positions, then perhaps we need to, if you either discuss it in open or closed session, is that possible, Mr. McNally? Is that what?
Well, it's not possible to go in closed session.
Okay.
Well, I say, you know, not against Arlene, but the city clerk's job should be put up or positioned.
We've already advertised for it three times, James. Yep.
Well.
And got no response.
Let's look at it again.
Well, I'm making the appointment, you can vote it up and down at this point.
You're, you're making a, a blanket for the entire deal, what you're?
I don't care how we do it, we can do it either way.
Well, you can go right down, I'm not doing a blanket. So if you want to go by, by individual job and ask us for a vote, we can do that.
Okay. Um, I am going to make, I am going to appoint Jonathan's police chief. Motion to approve.
I'll approve that.
Motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, Bob makes the motion. Second?
I'll second that.
Second by Ja, James. James, vote.
Yep.
Isla?
Yes.
And Bob.
Yes.
Mr. McNally as the, um, attorney. A motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Isla, second. That is for no second. So we're going to do this with all the rest of them?
Yep.
So then who are your suggestions?
We'll, we'll give to you those.
This is the night to do it.
Okay. Are we going to finish the run, or are we going to do this apart from here?
Well, I just said we're going to do this, and James said yes, I guess I should stop there. Engineer, JEO, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, engineer. I'll second that motion.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
James?
Yes. Steve Parr.
Steve, um, what'd you say?
Parr.
Parr? No. Parr, yes, Parr, yes. For Steve Parr, mo, of the street superintendent? No motion, no second. Uh, city clerk, um, Arlene? No motion. Treasurer? Treasurer? It would appear that we have approved our chief of place, and that we have approved the engineer, J E O. The next regular meeting will be January 4th. I have extended an invitation to each of the new people to come and see me, either have done that yet. This, some of this could have been handled before the meeting. If you would like to have an opportunity to have a nomination for your board chairman at this point, you can do that. I nominate Bob.
As board chairman?
I'll second that.
Do you want to private vote, or do you want to vote open? How do you want to do it?
Private vote.
So all in favor of Bob as board chairman? Isla?
Aye.
So Isla, James, and I guess Bob, whether you like it or not, you're in. You don't even have to say aye. So the, I would entertain motion to adjourn.
Well, just for that, you've got a job in my way.
Oh, yes, yes, that's within my way. The, um, the apartment house has been bought by Craig Marsh and his wife, and there's a light pole that's in the parking lot, basically, that needs to be moved. And they, he just called over the weekend and wanted to know, wanted me to run by and make sure that the board has no objections to that. The guys have been down there looking at places for it to go to. They had a water break on the south, on the east side of the street there, and they were out there digging all that up, and so I called, when Cory came in to look at it about moving it, I told him that he needed to quit digging test holes down there, but they had our water pipes. But, but they found a good place for it. It'll move up closer to the corner, so it'll get more light there, but the new pole's gonna give less outward. It's probably gonna come straight or down, because that's what they do, but they need to get it out of there. The guy wires and stuff, it's probably not safe and shouldn't be there. So if nobody has any objections to that for any reason, we'll just go ahead and give our approval on that. I don't think there's a problem. Okay. I would entertain motion to adjourn.
You should understand that since you haven't made these appointments, the clerk has no authority to be in the office tomorrow, the treasurer has no authority to sign any check.
You won't get a paycheck.
So basically, you're shutting down the city.
Yep. You do understand that.
Who, who at this point in time are the signs of the check? Who signs checks?
Lisa and I.
Lisa.
But you two signature?
And no, the board chairman can't do it. They tried to do that once before, and the auditors came down pretty hard on it.
Is it, is it, could we have a...
You want to put Lisa back in as a clerk treasurer?
Is that possible to be a temporary until we can figure out exactly where we're headed to? Is that possible? Until the next meeting to see where we're at or what we're gonna do? Do we have that option? Is that not an option?
Well, Mr. McNally?
I'm not gonna say it because I'm not city attorney.
I thought you were on contract all personally, James.
We just told you, Bob, that all these appointments are supposed to be made in the first of December.
When do their contracts run out?
There aren't. They are by year by year as of the first of December, when the new, when the reorganization month, by state statute.
So I understand you're right. When they voted, that was the end of their contract.
Right. If they don't reappoint them, they're done.
So I guess then we would ask Lisa if she would like to stay on for a year to extend that opportunity for her to do that until we can figure out what we want to do after that point is exactly what we need to do?
I'll approve that. I'll approve Lisa as the treasurer.
You need a clerk treasurer type of thing, so she has the authority to do both. The clerk has to attest to the mayor's signature in a lot of ways. They, they have to sign the minutes, they have to do all of that stuff besides that. So you need two jobs wrapped up in one, or you need two people doing two jobs.
Right now, we'll do two jobs wrapped up in one.
Yes, we've been that way for quite a while.
Okay. That's what we're gonna say.
Mr. McNally? Can I speak with you sometimes? Good right now.
Why would she want to stay? Really?
Why would she want to stay? What, what, that, what's that question? Why would she want to stay?
Why would anybody that has worked so hard with us want to stay and help us when a new council comes in and says, "We don't want to appoint you again"?
Do you want to go down later?
I didn't want the, I, a full-time position when I signed on. I signed on because I know QuickBooks only, and I stepped in under different circumstances. And I'm trying to do the best that I can. Sometimes it's not the best to the city's likings, but all I can do, I didn't sign on to be the clerk.
You didn't have to, Paula.
What did, I guess, what, what did you sign on to be?
She said that she signed on to be a helper with QuickBooks because I'd advertised for a clerk or somebody that understood QuickBooks. And that's what she came in to help with. At that point, um, we had two people then. So Kathy had the clerk treasurer situation, then Lisa puts the point of that upon Kathy's to clerk.
So you, you would like to be hired in the position that you originally were hired for, and not have to be more than that?
Whoever is in that position has to be a clerk and treasurer, Bob, because that's what they do. They handle money and they handle government papers.
So down the road, Lisa, if we're looking at potentially having an auditor to come and carry the heavy load of this, and you could be, you could be your treasurer and you wouldn't have to be the clerk?
But you all had just slapped me in the face, so to speak, when you don't want to appoint me back here. So now, all of a sudden, when you're pushed to the gun, saying that nothing is going to go on, now you're asking for me to stick, stay on. I'm in a hard position. I'm in a hard position.
We're asking you to do that.
And also, I, you know what? I do not like, I do not like all the political things that go on and so forth. I'm just, I'm just, I didn't sign on to do the political...
And I don't think this is against you, Lisa, it's just...
No, I want you to have the job that you originally applied for. That's what I want you to do, to come and do the job that you originally applied for. I, I don't know or understand the circumstances why you have to do more than what you originally were wanting to do when you came here. That's what I, I want that person, and now we can't have that person because we need to have a clerk treasurer. So what you were hired to do originally...
The clerk treasurer is, does understand QuickBooks. That's our accounting system.
I would, I would entertain that, but I'm talking to Lisa about her, what she originally mattered.
Understand that, but I'm trying to clarify why, you know, you're saying that she's not doing the job that she came in for.
No, no.
Well, that's what you said.
So you said other people that, and she was forced to do things that she didn't want to do.
No, I didn't say she was forced to do anything.
That was her statement, she was hired for this and now she has this.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify something here, okay? May I do that? The clerk treasurer in that office handles money and government papers all day long. That's what they do. She came because she, I advertised specifically for QuickBooks because that's what our accounting system is. She thought she could come in and do that because we had a clerk treasurer and she could just help with that. She has done that big time, plus taken over when Kathy left. So for you to say, "Well, she's not, we don't want her as clerk treasurer, she feels..." that, I mean, I'll let her talk about that, but she just said she just slapped me in the face. So I, I don't happen to think this is about anybody but the fact that you want to have your choices over and above. But I, I just think it would have been pretty as if you would have made this ahead of the be, so...
I think Lisa, the one position that she didn't ask you put in.
No, she did. Yes, she did. She came in to work in the office. It's, that's, you're, you're, you know, you're fighting.
Come on, hold on, hold on. She was put in a position, you just said you ran after somebody to do QuickBooks.
To work in the office.
That's her job.
As clerk treasurer. If you are running the QuickBooks, you're running the business of the city.
Was she hired?
Okay, I'm, this is...
No, I'm asking you a question. Was she hired for that position?
Yes, she was.
She was hired as her treasurer.
She wa, no, because Kathy held that position. We did not change that in the middle of the year.
Right, but we need to fill Kathy's position.
It's filled because we put Kathy, Lisa in there when Kathy left.
So she was put in the position, she wasn't hired here.
So you never changed positions within the company?
No, I'm, I'm, did she have to do that position?
Her position has not changed a whole lot other than she's been forced to do more minutes and council things that she was, and that's why we had chosen to have Arlene do that. We need more help in the office.
Right.
So if Arlene can pick up the slack on the, on the so-called clerk jobs with the minutes and the filings and the, the clerk's job is to keep track of stuff in the files as well as do minutes and do those kinds of things. It can also take money, whatever. So then that job of the QuickBooks and the reports and the, you know, the financial statements can, which is, falls under that treasurer's definition by the state statute. So if we, and like I said earlier, the local municipalities recommends that you have both, of course, but they also understand that in a lot of small towns, that doesn't happen. The state statutes kind of talk about you have to have, but they also recommend that you don't have that many people available. I think that what, you know, it looks to me like that, you know, you want, you want a reorganization so that everything's right, but I'm asking you not to throw out people that have dedicated some time and effort and a lot of love towards this city and just walk in and say, "We don't want you". And you just did that to a man that has worked his heart out.
I'd like to also be the new council members aware that some of the decisions that are made also affect personnel that work for the city, that make sure that you run every day.
Right.
I don't know how many days I can work without a paycheck. I don't know how many days the state would allow. I'm, I'm just speaking out loud. I don't know how this is gonna affect things, but I don't know how, long the other person could work without a paycheck. So I would say you should find a resolution to sort this out and keep the people on staff. And if you have differences, work on it later date because it also specifies in the sewer and mortar that you have to have somebody certified in those positions. And you start messing with those, you're talking about fines on top of that and all kinds of things. These jobs have all been advertised for and nobody applies for them. So you better think about, before you make your final decision, please think about that as well. Because I live in this town, I didn't grow up in this town, they're, they're close. You know, if you want to change things, fine, but don't come in with guns blazing because there, there's a lot of problems that you're gonna have to address real fast in order to hold this together. And if it's not criticizing or anything, the board has every right to do that. But there's a lot of avenues to think about before you do such things. And as we stand right now, if I understand correctly, there's a lot of people that are essential workers in the city that can't, that we don't have to do the job now and possibly wouldn't quit, and that could be a chain of events.
If, and thank you, Pat, and the, and the one very big one that you're looking at right now. If I don't have a clerk that's able to sign this resolution that you just passed, then the whole funding of the allocation, highway allocations, everything, that seventy-seven thousand dollars is blown.
We also have contractors that we work with, and they're expecting a fee for work that they've done. And if they don't receive that payment, even, even if you can find somebody that's really good and tell me here to do all these things, who's gonna want to do that? And who are we gonna get to provide the parts and the things that we need or the next person needs, whoever to hold this together? Lisa, I didn't mean to insult you by any means, Lisa, as our first meeting, I mean, this is a lot for us to take on in our first meeting. We're just trying to get to the bottom of a lot of things. Would you consider staying on as a treasurer?
I do not know right now. Right now, I want to walk. Right now, I want to walk.
Okay. And now, you can...
Because, because that, I'm married.
Does anybody have a code book?
Pardon?
Does anybody have a code book?
Sure.
The, the state statute that I've, this is, you know, let's all speak on a turn, I guess it's my turn. The state statute says you either set them by ordinance, they serve until the end of the mayor's term, or they serve one year unless removed. So it depends on what the city code book actually says.
That's pretty close, I think.
So the December meeting is still within the year of service. This would be the appointment for January, would it not?
No.
I mean, anybody can quit whenever they want.
It's based upon the election.
Right, well, it's, it's not, though. The state statute says they'll serve on the mayor's term or one year unless removed, depending on what the city ordinance says it is.
And the term is based on the election, and...
On the mayor's term. Your term wasn't this election. I think, I mean, they either serve four years based on your term, or they serve one year, depending on what the code book says.
Okay.
It's seventeen-one-oh-seven, since you don't have a city attorney, you get me. How about that? I'm really cheap, by the way.
So, so there and until I'm out, is that what you're saying?
I don't, whatever the city code says, you set it by ordinance. It's seventeen-one-oh-seven in the state statute, and that's what it says. You have to pick one of those two options. The city officials either serve until the mayor's term is over or one year unless removed. I can read it to you if you're so inclined. I was trying to look back in the journal... I was trying to look back in the journal to see when the minutes from the last election came through, to see if that was mentioned in the ordinance, because the ordinance would have to be published. So, there will be a copy in the clerk's record of that ordinance being published whenever it happened last, but I don't know when that is.
And I'm just accustomed to being a January thing. Is that the first of the year?
Well, your city attorney is under a contract. You signed a contract with him for a period of time, not necessarily, I mean, his is effectively the same, but you also had signed a contract with the city attorney.
To serve a year, to serve.
Which, right, which, it's not a fiscal year, it's a calendar year. So, December is his year.
No, it is the term of the appointments.
Which is up, usually, which is on a calendar year, starting with the January meeting. Okay, I, I mean, it's whatever the code book says. You can interpret it yourself.
I don't have a contract, but I would concur with you that it wouldn't be.
Well, pull his con, pull his contract.
This day could, could change very, you know, what if we didn't have this meeting until next week because of whatever reason?
And, you know, pull his contract and see when the end term date was. It's, it's listed in the contract. And the only other thing I had was, even if you decide this today or you don't decide this today.
The term of office of the city council is four years. The members elected in the general election, election in nineteen-ninety-seven shall continue to hold their office until December of two thousand and one.
Council, council members.
All right, I'm just establishing that.
Is that the minute book or the ordinance?
No, this is the ordinance.
The code book.
You, pardon?
The code book for the city?
Yes, that's what you asked for, wasn't it? Looking for.
I'll be quiet and let you find what you want. But the only other option, of course, is whatever you decide tonight, you can have a special meeting two days from now if you want to and make your nominations work. There's nothing that says it has to wait until the January meeting, just for funsies. It's not required to wait till January, so. To say that the city is shut down is perhaps a little, uh, abrasive, alarmist? Maybe that's a better word, so. You just have a section about mayor duties, right? You, it's in the, usually in the hundreds to match up with the state code. The first two hundred ordinances aren't online, so I couldn't look it up that way.
The mayor at the first regular meeting of the city council. That's after he or she takes office. This is an election year.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I'm looking for, was where was the election year.
Sure.
Anyway, shall elect, shall appoint clerk treasurer, engineer, city attorney, chief police, fire chief, et cetera, et cetera, which does imply, um. That's clerk's duties.
Someone's has to be based on logic. As I was just being pointed, we had no input until this point in time. And then we, if we wanted things to change, we had no way to have them change until a year after we're already on the board. Essentially, that's.
Till the next, till the next election year by that setting.
Right, so when, we're not, we're not.
Or, or one year. Either, the two options are the mayor's term or one year unless removed otherwise. Those are your two options by seventeen-one-oh-seven subsection two.
So, then essentially, this shit.
Say that again, bro.
Your, your two option, I'll just, I'll just read it to you. So, seventeen-one-oh-seven subsection two, mayor qualifications, election officer appointment, removal, terms of office, okay? I'm not an attorney, you can take this for what you want. The mayor with the consent of the city council may appoint such officers as shall be required by ordinance or otherwise required by law. Such officers may be removed from office by the mayor. The terms of office for all officers except regular police officers appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council shall be established by the city council by ordinance. The ordinance shall provide that either A, the officers hold the office to which they have been appointed until the end of the mayor's term and until their successors are appointed and qualified unless sooner removed, or B, the officers hold the office for one year unless sooner removed. So, if they serve on the term of the mayor, they're there until their successors are appointed and qualified.
And that has to be designated in the code, is that the way you write that?
You, you should have in your city code a hundred years ago, picked one of those two options or whenever this was written. You should have one of those options in your thing.
Right.
So, I guess the point is this might not be necessary in the entire scope of things, unless they're all on a one-term revolving term.
And that's the way it was in the school or nothing like that, same.
Sure.
That was weird.
Well, you have to pick one.
Right.
You're, but the question is here, what's the year, is that?
Which year do you do it? Is it on a one-year every year or is it on the mayor's term?
And I find where they have actually made that distinction, um, that, um, you know, when and where the city, um.
I, I would ima, I mean, it's, it's in the, it would be in the same spot where all of your duties and powers are listed, right?
But it, but it says, um. Okay, it's just, um. Residents and da-da-da-da, it's convated on the, but that's all council members. See, and they're referring to seventeen-one-oh-three and they're not talking about city official, um. Mayor should have immediate and general control with the property and officials for sides of the meetings, um. What is it, the second, two-thirds, the mayor goes to the.
And you think logically, there'd have to be somewhere, it says in a case and a situation where you didn't have a clerk, you just have to be able to function as a man and to, as a government of people without that, without shutting down.
Say that again.
There has, I mean, logically, there would have to be some way that we could function as a government if we didn't have a clerk.
If what?
If we didn't have a clerk treasurer.
Can't, you've got to have two signatures on the clerk.
If she would end her, somehow had tragically, she would pass away on the way home.
And we would need someone immediately to be that clerk from, we would under emergency have a clerk, name someone a clerk.
All right.
That's, you know.
That's similar.
I have, and let, just let me say something that maybe is not in, not as the mayor, but as me. Um, I kind of have the feeling that, um, that there was a big movement to, um, we're gonna try and come in and help straighten things out in the city. There is a desire on both of you people's part to come in and make a difference and to, um, help or do it right or whatever that word might be. If your motivation is that I'm not doing it right and you want to do it different, then don't take it out on the help that is helping this, the, the office. If your motivation is that you want to actually help, then take time, and that's why I put out that I would like to meet with you ahead of time to kind of go through some of this. Not that you can't read the statutes yourself, but just to discuss. We went through a lot of this a couple of weeks ago. What we can do, what we can't do. There is a big need in that office for constant people. I wouldn't be here ten hours a day if we didn't need people in there to get work done. If you haven't sat there a day, you don't understand the kind of work that's in there. If you are on the council, you can't win their work. You can't, you don't, you can have access to everything the public has access, but you can't have access to personal files. So, the council can't come in and help as such in the office. So, why did we have Arlene there? Because Arlene was making labels for files and stuff, she never saw the stuff there. She typed up minutes and stuff that was already public notice, public, whatever. And we knew that she was off the council. And we knew that she was good help. And she too has some knowledge of QuickBooks. And she was working with getting the website up and going. This was, there was no conspiracy here for anything. Nobody's playing favors to get nobody's friends in there and run this and run that and have power. That's not what this is all about, never has been. I came in with two things. The number one thing was to get the books straightened out so that we understood what was going on. To make sure we accounted for every penny and that it was spent wisely. Our guys have equipment, like I said, that's held together with baling wire. We're barely hanging on at the sewer. And it's only because of their hard work and their knowledge that we don't have contaminated water and sewer. And nobody out there understands that.
We're not.
So.
We're not, just, we're not saying anybody not doing a job. Like Bob said, this is our first meeting.
And you were invited to come in earlier than that, both of you.
And I believe everything that I have to say, or you have to say, what, you can say whatever you want, is here in the public, that the public forum, that's what it's about. I'm here to serve the people that, two hundred and twelve people that voted for me as one here. I don't need to have a private meeting with you about that because if I don't represent them in what I'm doing, then I shouldn't.
It wasn't about a private meeting, it was about what this, it was about, it was about bringing you up to speed with here's what's in the books and here's what.
So, we have a work meeting.
And the procedure.
We have a work meeting in a public forum in front of everybody where we work as city council party people in a work room. And we have a meeting. That's the way that they do that. So, you get to introduce into the process.
I.
We basically ourselves, thanks to the people that voted for us, are put, are put here with no education, training, what we did ourselves, brought upon ourselves and educated ourselves to get to the point where we are. We believe what we're doing is in the best interest. I have nothing against you at all. I'm, I think you did a wonderful job. Uh, and, and, you know, just to rewind things a little bit, I don't know how, you know, the office, as you say, and, and I, and the patron you mentioned, that is a beloved friend of mine, but to say that you need seven more people in an office when, when that work was done diligently by one person at one point in time, is I don't know how we got to this point where it's, where it's nine person, one, two, and seven more is nine in itself.
I just said that, that, you know, the, the power of exaggeration, but Diane said, I know there's no work in there for seven people. In other words, there's a lot there. The, the also, Bob, I used to think that. And if you're saying what one person did years ago, I understand that and I thought the same thing. The demands and, you know, regulations take on a lot of things that change how those things are done as well. And we could discuss what's good and what's bad here all day. What we need to do, though, is to have a working council. And if you want to have a workshop, you can have, we'll have workshops all day long. But, but. I might say that when, when this came upon me, whatever, two years ago, to try to find these people, it was Mr. McNally who stepped up and said, it really gave us guidance about how to do a lot of things and has been there for a lot of stuff. He doesn't overcharge us in any way. I called at least three engineers that were local people and, and I don't have time, don't want it, da-da-da. And we knew that JDO was, did towns. I think they're high-priced, but they do well. Um, they offered the, the street superintendent, we needed that, we needed it immediately. Um, so that was a part of JDO that we liked. Kathy walked in with no training, whatever, she survived and, and did well with, you know, she, she had computer experience and bookkeeping experience was the salvation, no QuickBooks experience. So, um, so everybody has worked to try to bring things together, but there's something underlying that continues to say, this isn't right or this is, I don't trust this or I don't trust that, I can't put my finger on it. Don't know. We have worked very hard in there to, I, I try not to stick myself into parades and swimming pools and whatever, you know, let the public decide, but the money and the understanding of the requirements of, of, of where it goes and how we get it and that it's in the right pot and that we take it out of the right pot and put it in the right project and those kinds of things, um, they're a big thing. And, um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm always open. I'll, I'll talk to anybody that wants to come in and ask those questions. I've asked the council for the last four years, come and talk to me, or plus two years, excuse me. So, no. But effectively, you have, as far as I am concerned, the way it feels to me is that you have effectively said that those people who have been working for the last two years under me, in our position, that we're gonna okay the chief of police because we have to have him. I don't know what motivation is for JDO, maybe because they're working on the pool. And the rest of them, we don't want them anymore. And I feel like, Lisa, that's a slap in the face. So, we have nobody to go to to say, is this legal or not? But if you want to have another meeting to decide this, if you want me to make those appointments, you better come up with some good names, with some good background and have them willing to work.
Could I?
Yes.
I, I've been observing in the office quite a bit, like at your occasion. Um, I know for a fact that it's, it's been a difficult thing to come up with someone who understands QuickBooks well enough to actually make judgments about what should happen, even with some training. I, I do think that Lisa does a very good job doing what she does and I, I think maybe what you guys have said too, uh, be that what it may, that's my thought. To replace maybe a problem.
And, and, you know, we, we've had our, our ups and downs as far as what needs to be out there and we've gone, you know, we've worked with Eddie who is, who is, he said the last time we talked, he said there's two kinds of accountants. There's the kinds that wants to account for every penny and have meltdowns, they don't know where that penny went. And then there's the others that are kind of management, oh, well, we can fix this later, just get it out there. And he said, I'm kind of that last one, I kind of say, okay. And he said, you want to know where every penny is? And I said, I would agree with that. But, but he also agreed that when we changed the. But, but he also agreed that when we changed accounts to, and if you would take a, if you, we didn't even get a chance to look at those. But in the old days, we had a general funds accounting thing and there was operating and police. And that was the only two accounts there. That would appear that that's the only two things that could be paid out of general funds and that's not true. These restricted had everything from the pool to the baseball field to the whatever, and that's not true. So restricted doesn't mean we can't spend it. It means it has to be spent in a certain way. And in the streets department, it has to be spent, but we lose it. And those are things that we learn with working with the auditors. I, I have made lots of calls to that auditor. Well, first name basis. And, and it is, this isn't my idea of what this is supposed to be. This is the auditors telling me what this is supposed to be. If, Bob, I think I heard you say earlier, if we want to get a different auditor. I know that Mr. Pytzen recommended that we get a certain CPA to go through our books. In the end result, every audit goes to the state and they approve it or not. And they do our audit. How can you get any better? And the last time they sent us, we, we, you know, we've got bids and they came in cheaper than a local CPA would have done it. And yet they're the end, they're the end guy with all said and done. So it's, it's, we, we, our engineer doesn't, just because we have a city engineer doesn't mean we can't have other people. We're, we're looking, JDO is our city engineer and yet Miller's out of Carney is going to give us a plan also because we want that ability to see more than one, plan more than one cost and be able to work with that. We want to do cheap, if we want to call it that. Or we can call it wise, we can call it whatever we want, but we also want it to be effective. Kind of like, you know, we can go buy another gas tank and hang it by a wire onto a diesel truck or we can go fix it properly. And I know that we have spent money on equipment, not everybody agrees with. We have spent money on a lot of things not everybody agrees with. But if on the day-to-day thing, I like I said earlier, I trust my maintenance people. I trust the fact that they know what they're supposed to be doing. They work daily and weekends and they're able to fix more stuff than the, the public, the town has no idea what all that can do. I feel privileged to have been able to work with the people that have had the heart to go against hardship and the willingness to fight for what they believe is right. And I was, had high hopes that a new council would just be a new council that would come in and add to that process. Everybody's feelings, everybody's thoughts are all important. I have never, no matter what you may have heard, I've never dismissed anybody's thoughts. They've joked about them, may have made sarcastic remarks, but that's, that's always followed by a laugh. When the engineers asked me how soon I wanted their proposal, I said tomorrow evening at four o'clock will be fine. And it got pretty quiet. And then they realized I was joking. So. You know, we have to work together, people. And I, I, I don't know what else to do, but I, I have advertised. If you have somebody that you know is gonna walk right into this office and make this great clerk and treasurer and all of that, that's all fine and dandy. But they still have to work with me. So that may or may not be an issue. I don't, maybe that's why nobody else applied. I'm not that hard to get along with, but that may not be the rumor. Yes, thank God.
You know, I don't know, just sitting here listening to all this as an employee, as a void member in the election. Not all things go the way I want. Some people get on, some people don't. I'm on the chairman's board now with what's been said in place. You know, effectively the attorney is gone. If you've got a legal problem tomorrow, the board is aware, gotta figure out who we're gonna call to have to deal with. Who's gonna pay the paychecks if Lisa quits? You know, it, 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 it snowballs. I, I would like some assurances, but I'm at least gonna be a lady. I can't take my worries, I can't put proches on the table. And the decisions that were made tonight, I understand your views, but okay, you made your decision, that's great. What and where do you go from here and it has to happen fast. And the thing is, it doesn't happen fast. All these jobs have been advertised for. So I would like some assurances of what's in my future here for often where it looks like all these essential jobs are, are, are antiquated. So I, I would like.
Well, and our highway, and our highway allocation comes in every month. And that's kind of what keeps us going in between the big payments of property.
Who's gonna sign?
And if that certification isn't in the office, that stops.
And who's gonna sign and send it?
Who does the certification? John Far? Or Steve Far?
You, the, the board just voted for me to make that certification. That's been the last two years.
Right.
And Lisa, and Lisa has to sign it.
What's that?
And the clerk has to sign it.
Okay.
Along with me.
Okay.
So I'm just saying where your clerk is involved, they, you know, they sign minutes, they sign the, the, almost everything that goes out. If I sign it, they certify that I'm the one that signed it. There, there's just a lot of legality that on the surface seems silly, but it's there. The clerk signs the minutes before they go into the record book. The clerk is supposed to know where everything is in the office and that's part of the redoing of files has been to make that more clear. This is nobody's fault. It's just a change of people and people thinking different and so forth and so on. But I'm, this is my primary example of this. One day I came in and I was looking for the interlocal agreements because you have to list them for the budget. And I knew we had one with the Ponka tribe. So I'm looking for, you know, the dates and the whatever, the names, et cetera. So I remember saying to Kathy, where would I find the interlocal agreement? And she said, well, with who? And I said, well, Ponka, we've got, I've found that some of the others, but the Ponka tribe. I said, I've looked under interlocal, I've looked under Ponka, I've looked under tribe. Where do I look? Oh, she said it's in the smoke shop. Fine. See, she knew exactly where it was. I mean, that's just. But then the other day I went in looking for something and I found parts of it in three or four different files. This has been, it'll get better because we're, we're making files that are more readable, number one. We're putting in a drawer like all the water and get it out from everything else and then something else, whatever. And then making lists of where everything is so that if any of us are gone, the next person could come in. That's organization and that's what, that's part of the clerk and the, that whole thing. Nothing's right or wrong, but some things are easier. If you. Book said that you don't have to wait till January, which probably is true, if you want to do another meeting. But if you want to do another meeting, like I said, then if you've got some other ideas, then those need to be. Since I have to make the appointment, you have to come to me and say, this is who I want to appoint. And that's just the goal. We better have some good reasons, I think, as human beings, to throw somebody out the door without somebody else that we know is 10 times better or for some other reason that is very good reason. To just say, I'm not gonna vote for these people you want because I don't, I wanna wait and I wanna explore more. That's showing no confidence in my judgment either, so, you know, that's kind of a slap too.
So how are we opening our work accountants beneath these positions tall and fast? How does the board go forward and do this?
So is Lisa's position right now, are you the treasurer or the city clerk?
I can vote.
I can vote.
And you were hired as?
Originally I was hired to do clerk position.
Clerk position.
And when Kathy quit, I was put in and voted by the council to fill that position.
And you were 40 hours a week?
Yes.
You used to work 40 hours a week?
And more.
Yeah, I, I could test.
40 hours a week?
140 hours.
She's in here on Sundays trying to get the work done. So you can't fault her in one way or you'll have to go through a meeting. As far as trying to get the work done.
So technically I have not necessarily overstepped my job description or so. I was put where I was asked to go.
To go.
Can you step up to be the clerk while we have this opening? So I got voted to city clerk pro temp and a week or two later or whatever, we had the other meetings and I ended up being told, Lisa, you're now the clerk. So now I'm handling.
Because that's a combined position. Because we've never had more than one person.
Handling and juggling them both and so forth.
And that's why it's very hard to define what is one job and what's another because in our small town, whoever's been in that position is probably handled both of them, pretty much.
So when we're looking at these appointments then, would, would you then entertain appointing Lisa as the city clerk slash treasurer herself?
That's what I'm basically in now.
Right.
But.
But when it was before, it was like Lisa as a treasurer.
Because we need another one in the office, Bob, and I'll just try to separate them.
Okay, but right now would you?
If you wanted, if, if you would accept Lisa as clerk treasurer, that's fine. Then I would ask you to approve the hiring of another part-time person.
I'd like to do that. I'd like to approve that.
To approve Lisa as a clerk treasurer?
Yep, and, and entertain hiring another part-time person.
And I would, and I would.
Because obviously you are.
And I would, and I would suggest you hire Arlene right now because she's already in there.
And Lisa, I'm assuming Lisa, you are overloaded.
Absolutely, anybody else. That's what, that's what Diane is trying to tell us, was that that's an overload.
But Earl already works for the city.
Pardon?
Arlene already works for the city.
Arlene has put in some part-time help just trying.
But she's already hired. She could go to work tomorrow.
She's already hired for part-time.
Her job's not in question unless she's not, I mean, the question was, is she the, is she the clerk or not? Not, does she?
Right.
Change or lose?
But we would have to approve her for more hours and to be in there because before she was just a part-time. Does that make sense?
If they want her, if you want her to be the clerk, you would need to do that.
She's got.
Otherwise we just continue on the same way you did yesterday.
Right.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
Thank.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we did not have the last board vote to possibly give you the authorization to hire someone.
Part-time.
Applications?
Those are part-times.
How, how many applications did you get?
One.
And who was that?
Arlene.
And you tried to appoint her to meet and it was turned down by, by the council.
Yeah, and, and I don't know.
And why did that hit?
Yeah, and I don't, and, and if Arlene wants to work for us, I'm willing to keep her on.
Why does the council want to start that all over again with a new council?
Yeah, I don't know.
That's just a question of the common, I'm not satisfied enough.
I would, I would entertain, but I would entertain a motion, if you want to make a motion, to keep.
A motion?
Um, to keep Lisa on as, as city clerk treasurer slash treasurer. And to, and to keep Arlene on with the needed hours to fill in. Because she's already.
I have nothing against Arlene, I have a problem with a city council member working in the office.
Okay. And, and as I.
And, and not my just problem, I had several people approach me about that issue with the city council person. That's a conflict of interest, of her working in the office.
I don't think there was ever a conflict of interest.
It is a conflict of interest. It is.
In how?
You said earlier that she should not have access.
Right, and she didn't, James.
If you're in that office, you have access.
No, you don't.
If you're in the building, you have, trust me, I run an office, if you're in the office, you have access.
Okay.
To files.
Okay.
I had several people say, why do we have a city council member working in the office? I said, I don't know.
Most of the time she came in and got names for files and did them at home and came back and put the files in the drawer. That was, you know, and like I said, typed up minutes and so forth.
Her position?
Well, she's off the council now, so that's not a conflict. And you just said that you would entertain, that you would go with that. So a motion, a motion to appoint Lisa clerk treasurer and to continue with Arlene as an employee of the city, as she is without the appointment of clerk or treasurer.
I will approve that.
I'll second that.
Second? Hyla?
Yes.
Are you taking notes? Or have you quit? Hyla says yes.
Yes.
Bob says yes. James says yes.
Yes.
We're gonna need a lawyer. We're working on that stinking sewer thing right now and I mean, I tell you what, we need a lawyer. I'm in touch with him daily.
And I've been in touch with one daily too, working on it. And I will, when I have the name and it's written in on black and white, I'll give it a few for your approval and. And I would, do we, we would need to then have a special meeting at that point in time to do that?
Yep, yep, you have to have, whatever.
What, Mr. Peacecon?
Yes.
Was there any other positions that you are short?
Um, they, you didn't do the street superintendent.
That has to do with funding.
Yep.
Also have to do the certification.
Yep.
Okay, just, I'm just saying.
And since we do have the city workers here, what do you guys get out of the street superintendent?
Quite a bit.
I mean, just bring me up to speed.
Well, they're, they're helping us on a few intersections and stuff, which we have to lay around on that.
As far as how to lay them out or how to?
Well, we're trying to get rid of this.
Right.
From the end of storm sewers and stuff like that. And it takes somebody a lot more time than we've got. And it takes somebody a lot more time than we've got to do stuff like that.
And more background, isn't it?
Yeah, it did figure out, but we got to prefer elevation and stuff. And that's Manny, he's helped us out a lot of them. And there's some street stuff that he's said, you know, you know, we have to work on this stuff, you know, and it's, it's not a list, but that, just all kinds of things like that, he's really helped a lot.
Just a lot more education.
And then they do the, they do the paperwork, too. See, the, the lane count, the lane mile count and all of those.
And what do we pay Stanley a year?
That's a thousand dollars that we get from the state. That was that thousand dollars for certifications. That's all he asked for. Whatever the state pays us, he takes. So basically, we take nothing out of our coffers except what we can.
Where's Steve from?
Like, um, I don't know.
Should he come up here once a month then to visit with you guys or?
When do we call him?
How often?
He's been out here about three times last year.
Probably.
Just when you need him, you give him a holler, he will go to wash it through everything.
Yep. He may have his side ideas that we have been overlooking, yes.
Well, and he does the, the one and six plan and all that. That's all, it hasn't changed forever, but he made a few changes in it, and then two of those intersections is what he came up with.
I make, I'll make a note to the rehire.
James made a motion to rehire Steve Farr.
I'll second the motion.
Bob seconded it. And let's go with, Bob?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And I?
Yes.
Who else did we have?
That should be it.
Okay. We need to, basically. Basically, we need to name our bank. We've always had Farmers and Merchants as our primary bank. We also have an account with Cedar. We also need to name our press, which has always been the Crofton Journal. Is that it? So we need to approve those also.
I make the motion to approve Farmers, Merchants, State Bank, and the City Security Bank as our banking physical agents, and the Crofton Journal as our president.
I'll second that.
Okay. So motion by Bob and second by Isla. And so let's start with James.
I.
Isla?
Yes.
So that's done. I think we got it. So when do you want to meet again? Do, we need to, if, if you're going to make some recommendations, Bob, as chairman, why don't you contact me at some point when you feel like that you guys have something that you want to do about the lawyer? I also then would like that we will be re, doing, renaming, solidifying, whatever you want to call it, the committees. So if you want to come in and get a list of all that, who's serving, who's what we need and so forth, then you can work with me to come up with some names and some suggestions, make some phone calls, whatever you want to do there. I am also going to ask for reports before, between now and January, when we do that, like Mike, I'd like reports from your committee, from you. I want reports from economic development, from any of the, the swimming pool people, everybody that's out there on a committee. It's going to be hard because of the COVID thing to get a lot of people, and that's okay. But I would like to meet with the chair people of all of those, and maybe we can get Bob to set in on something, if we can arrange something here where we've got some distance and so forth. I want everybody to feel safe at all times. We kind of feel safe around here because we're all in and out of here, but we need to pay attention. Yeah.
I mean, I have a theoretical question, a suggestion, a question with what's happened tonight, and maybe Cheryl already knows the answer to this, but if I was in her shoes, I would want to know if I tried to call him and now I had a legal question and he won't answer the phone because of what's going on tonight, what do I do? So she knows how to handle day-to-day business from now until we have an return to the meeting. Just a thought.
Yeah. Well, that's what they said. They had, they had suggestions, but they're still not on the payroll until we have a meeting.
But what do we do if we have something to be out, out here between now and then?
And even our legal municipalities, if we don't have an attorney, they'll give you legal advice. They would never give us legal advice since we had an attorney. So that would be an option, I suppose.
And that's free of charge, though, right?
We belong to the union sometimes.
It's very, depends on what they do for you.
So we're not, we are not about council because of their representation of the union?
I've kind of been on the phone with them a couple, three times. Surface stuff they'll answer, you know, sometimes it's why you need to find, you need to look for them and so on. And it will depend on what we might need, but it's a valid question. I'm going to guess that you can meet with me for a little too long if you've got suggestions or you can call me with what you've got. I don't know if you guys have talked, if you're talking to the same one or you've got two different ideas or what, but then never come again and so on. Let's adjourn. We're going to figure out and get back to, we're not solving anything this way. So it's an entertained motion, but.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, motion by Isla, second by.
Do we establish a, a time and date for the other meeting that is during this adjournment process or what do we do then?
When can you have some names for me?
No, I mean our next regular meeting.
The next regular meeting is the first Monday of the month, which is, David, have a calendar?
And the time?
January 4th on here.
January 4th?
Yep.
Okay.
And that, the time on there as well?
Six.
Uh, sixer. Let's have, highlight it right under again.
All right. I'll second the motion, too, very.
So, Bob?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
And James?
Yes.
Okay, we adjourn. Oh, the, hey, guys here, oh, I need those back.